Okay, I'll turn it over to the chair.
Terrific, are we broadcasting now?
Yes.
All right terrific, call to order, good evening everyone, I'd like to call the April 20th, 2020 meeting of the San Carlos Planning Commission to order. To adhere to the San Mateo County's current shelter in place order, this planning commission meeting will be held via teleconference. In accordance with Governor Newsom's executive order N 2920, there will not be a physical location from which the public may attend. However, the public will have access to remotely observe and participate in this meeting. The agenda is posted on the San Carlos city website, streaming is available through the city's meeting web portal and on Comcast channel 27 and on AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. We're also open to public comment this evening, public comments will be received by telephone during the meeting. You will be invited and told when you can dial in for each agenda item, please watch the meeting. And then you may call 1-669-900-9128 or 1-301-715-8592. And it's meeting ID 238262027. So just a brief comment, this I think is the first planning commission meeting in San Carlos ever held by teleconference, so we're going to do the best we can. I definitely appreciate all the staff's hard work to put this in place and to enable us this evening. But you know, we do ask for everyone's patience, there will likely be glitches, we will likely stumble from time to time and we're going to do the best we can, so thank you everyone. So with that, we start every meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so as always, I invite you to join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic one nation, under God, indivisible, free, and justice for all. Thank you and welcome everyone, Lisa, can we please have the commissioner roll call?
Commissioner Ruth.
Present.
Commissioner Garvey.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Vice Chair Yakaponi.
Present.
And Chair Dugan.
Here. A public comment, we will now open up the floor for general public comment on any items not on tonight's agenda. Sarah, do we happen to have any callers in at this time to speak on items not on tonight's agenda? We will wait for one minute to see if anyone would like to call in for general public comment. And in each agenda item this evening, we will take a one-minute pause to allow people a chance to dial in before we conclude. There is no public intending to participate. We're still pausing, if any member of the public would like to dial in on general public comment, now's the time to do so. Sarah, I assume we've received no call-ins at this point?
Yes, no callers at this time.
Okay, we will now move on to agenda item five, approval of the minutes of the planning commission meeting of March 2nd, 2020, which was our last meeting. Commissioners, any comments on the meetings from that minute?
No.
Sorry, minutes from that meeting?
None here.
None here.
None here.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the planning commission meeting of March 2nd, 2020.
All second.
All in favor of approving the minutes of March 2nd, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The minutes are so approved, thank you.
And through the chair, just for the record, that was a motion by Commissioner Bradley, a second by Commissioner Yakaponi, and then all five commissioners voted to approve the minutes, thank you.
Terrific, thank you Lisa. I will now move on to agenda item six, which is public hearing. We have three matters before us this evening and one will be continued to a date uncertain. For each matter, our planning staff will review the project and give us the recommendation. Then we'll hear briefly from the applicant, if there's anything they would like to present. Then we'll open up for public comment on each item and finally we'll deliberate as a commission and make a decision. First, we will consider a five-story project at 626 Walnut Street, which we had previously considered at the February 21st Planning Commission meeting. Staff, do you have a presentation for us this evening?
Yes, thank you, I'll be giving the staff presentation. So the item before you is consideration, you can go to the next slide Lisa, thank you. It's request for design review for the new building, attentive parcel map to create the condominium units, a below-market rate housing plan, tenant transportation demand management plan, and use permit for unbundled parking, next. Planning Commission considered this application at its January 21st meeting. Commissioners expressed concern with the cost of unbundled parking and the resulting impact on below-market rate housing purchasers. The commission continued that public hearing. Next. The applicant has continued to refine the project details since the last planning commission meeting. And there's a couple of revisions that I wanted to note for the commission. The parking increased from 45 spaces to 46 spaces, so net increase of one space. And that's the addition of electronic electric vehicle van accessible parking space. As a result of adding this parking space, the bicycle parking was reduced from 70 spaces to 54 spaces. This still does exceed the city's code requirement for seven long-term spaces by providing 54. And in addition, eight short-term bicycle parking spaces are also provided. Next. The use permit request is to allow unbundled parking. An unbundled parking means separating the cost of parking from the purchase of a housing unit. The TDM plan or the transportation demand management plan supports unbundled parking as a way to reduce trips to and from the site. The TDM plan has also been revised since your last meeting to reflect the modified unbundled parking plan. Staff recommends the unbundled parking request be approved with modification. And that is that one parking space be dedicated to each below-market rate housing unit. And that results in four spaces being dedicated to the four below-market rate housing units. And the remaining 42 spaces be unbundled and available for purchase by market rate housing branch, housing owners. The public notice was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of the site on April 7th. And notice was published in the newspaper on April 9th. Staff has not received any comments as of this evening. I'm now happy to answer any of your questions and the applicant is also here this evening. He does not specifically have a presentation for you, but will be available to answer any questions.
Perfect, thank you Lisa, commissioners, any questions of staff or the applicant?
I had one question. Lisa, in the transportation demand management plan, I read the old plan and it talked about a 20% reduction in in vehicle trips and I read the amended plan that came out with this agenda for today. And it also says that there is a 20% reduction in vehicle trips. And I just wanted to make sure that that's the case, given that the number of bicycle slots has gone down, the number of parking spaces has gone up, there's been a few little tweaks. And I just want to make sure that that 20% reduction is in fact still going to happen.
That is correct, they're still able to achieve the 20% reduction. The parking is still, you know, under what the the code requirement is, so there's still that unbundled parking option. And as well, they still greatly exceed the required bicycle parking on site. And as you know, we're required to monitor that TDM plan. So we'll be checking it, I believe the first monitoring is after a few years to make sure it complies. Making sure they get that 20% reduction and if not, they're going to need to modify the plan to make sure that they achieve the 20% trip reduction.
Thank you.
I have a question, which is, will there be an impact to the price of the below-market units? Because the parking space is now included.
Yeah, so the price of the below-market rate unit will be fixed based on the area median income. And that's established by the California Department of Housing. So we get those numbers every year from HCD. And then we do a formula to determine what the affordable purchase price is. And so that's capped based on the income restrictions and it will not alter based on now including parking spaces.
And the applicant, Lisa, the applicant doesn't propose to change the the mix of the below-market rate units, correct?
That's correct, we still have three low-income units and one moderate income unit. So they have not modified the below-market rate housing plan as a result of this.
Great, thank you.
And commission, please do continue with your questions, I am going to announce that now would be the time to call in. If you would like to make a public comment on this agenda item, it would be area code 301-715-8592. And you will be prompted for a meeting ID which is 238262027. Commissioners, please continue with your questions and you could ask questions of the applicant at this time if you'd like, I believe.
Yes, and maybe you want to give a brief opportunity if the applicant would like to make any statements? They don't have a formal presentation, but they just may want to address the commission.
Sure, that would be welcomed if they'd like to do that at this time.
Okay, and Sean Gibson?
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Hi, commission. Now, I think we thoroughly reviewed this in our last meeting. Obviously, times have changed since then, so I appreciate you being innovative and doing this video conference. I don't have any comments, Lisa presented it very succinctly, I think, you know, we resolved the the BMR bundled with the with the parking space and that was the only only action.
Terrific, and I will just say thank you for that, that was a significant concern of ours and I think that was addressed quite well. Certainly, it's important that our below-market rate folks have the ability to have a parking space and I think actually, we had called you in that meeting to provide that space on the same sort of discount as the unit itself. And you in fact exceeded that by just bundling it in with no additional cost to the unit, as I understand it. And so I I appreciate that, I think I will speak for the commission and congratulate you on your dedication to below-market rate housing and making that fair and equitable for those folks, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thanks to the staff.
Just like to clarify the the no additional, so the the price that would have been the
The Commissioner Ruth has frozen.
Now that it's bundled, that the space is going to stay the same, so really now we're you're providing the parking space in effect for free compared to the previous proposal.
Exactly, and we'll have to, you know, adjust pricing as necessary on our end, but yes, those, my understanding as Lisa presented is the sales price will be dictated by the state and in calculation at the local jurisdiction and will be, you know, that will include a parking space and there will be no premium for that parking space.
Okay. Well.
And I would just have a quick question, it from, you know, I do think the addition of the EV van parking space is a good add to this project and obviously it had to go somewhere, so we lost, you know, 16 bicycle spaces, but I mean, by by all estimates, 54 bicycle spaces seems more than adequate for the number of units in this in this project. Are those bicycle spaces, were they also intended for public use or mass transit use or were all 70 intended for the occupants of the building?
Intended for occupants of the building, again, to encourage non-car trips, non-vehicle trips. So the other thing is, you know, our goal is to get back to 70, we're just rearranging things as we work out mechanical, electrical plumbing requirements, fire pump requirements, et cetera, so our goal is to have two per unit, but right now we have as-designed space for 54. And then there are additional out front for public use.
Got it, and by all of your estimates, 54 bicycle spaces is more than adequate for this project?
Yes.
Maybe just a quick reminder, if you could, for a family with, you know, two or three kids. Is there a locker space for storing children's bikes down on the lower level? Or how how might a family accommodate that?
Currently, there isn't. This is a very constrained site and so we're looking on that ground floor for opportunities by reconfiguring as much as possible. So as we work through the details, you know, we're looking for space on the ground floor to accommodate more biking. Storage would be great if we could on the ground floor, there are potential storage closets on, for each unit currently, on each level. But again, it'll it'll be determined on space needs for building systems.
Yeah, all right, thank you for that, you know, you're you're working hard to accommodate all of the different constraints and, you know, I guess, now that's a choice for a family to figure out whether they bring them on upstairs or not. Or how to make them accessible for for everyone's use, so I suppose the closer you're able to get to two per unit with your reconfiguration, the better for everyone. But thanks for your progress this far.
Terrific, if no more immediate questions, commissioners, I understand we do have one caller that would like to speak on this. We will go ahead and invite that caller into the meeting and we do invite any other members of the public to dial in now if they would like to be heard on this agenda item. Sarah, you can patch in the caller.
Caller 767, you are now live.
Oh, hi, welcome to our first-ever San Carlos tele-planning commission meeting, you're the first ever dial-in caller to one of our meetings, so welcome and we appreciate your comment.
Oh goodness, well, certainly it's a first, but thank you so much and good evening, planning commissioners and city staff. Hope everyone is doing well and healthy. So as a San Carlos resident, I am very concerned that the proposal at 626 Walnut will negatively impact the neighboring property at 618 Walnut. The neighborhood and our great community, I understand the proposal uses the seat density bonus for waivers of height, FAR and parking. Although this is allowed, the current design by the developer places a five-story 60-plus-foot blank wall just feet away from the exterior back loop balconies of 618 Walnut. According to state density bonus waiver shall not adversely impact the public. And, you know, honestly, clearly, the design has a negative impact. The proposal includes extremely large units of three and four bedrooms, much larger than any other comparable condominium units in the area or actually in the market. If the developer would simply pull back the units in these areas on the north side of the project and create reasonable light walls as well as elevate, so improve the blank wall in these locations. Then the residents of 618 Walnut may at least preserve some light and air. And, you know, is this not exactly what a planning commission should ask and weigh in on the exterior design of the proposed building? You know, and it is my feeling that, you know, probably the residents at 618 Walnut likely do not know how to read architectural plans and possibly don't understand this huge blank wall outside their space. You know, and although density bonus provides new affordable homes, some of these residents of 618 Walnut may also be residents of affordable units. So, you know, I ask that please protect our residents' rights to good and reasonable design, so you know, I thank you for your time and for listening to my comments.
Thank you very much caller, and I'm sorry, did you state your name at the beginning of your comments, I don't recall?
No, I'm so sorry, I didn't, my name is Amy Hathaway.
Thank you, Amy, I appreciate that, I should have prompted you to do that and thank you for your thoughtful comments, they're appreciated.
Thank you.
Staff, do we have any other callers on this item this evening?
No callers at this moment.
Okay, just given the first-time nature of all this, I think we will continue to deliberate, so if we get any callers in before we've approved or continued this item, just let me know and we will likely patch them in. But commissioners.
Commissioner Dugan, Greg Rubens here, just remember, it's a public hearing, so at some point after during the your discussions, you'll want to close the public hearing before taking action on the idea.
Okay, fair enough, understood. But we will leave public hearing open now while we continue to deliberate as a commission. Commissioners, any specific deliberation or lingering questions?
None here.
Well, when we reviewed this, the, at the previous planning commission meeting, we worked through the always difficult trade-offs of what's allowed under the, under the zoning code and what's appropriate for the neighborhood. And at that time, we we did come to the conclusion that the configuration of the building in its neighborhood was was acceptable. And it had some some really nice features to it, putting up a large bill next to another, another building, of course, is going to have, is going to have some impact, but we had to weigh the, weigh that and I just didn't want to make it seem like we weren't sensitive to that issue in a meeting today. sensitive to that issue in a meeting today, but we did we did sort of grapple with that at our previous meeting.
And and to build on that, I I recall the discussion we were, I particularly, I think the commission was pleased with the larger number of bedrooms associated with this project. We've approved some affordable housing projects in the past, and they've been for one or two-bedroom units. And these are larger, more intended for families, which personally I I really liked. And to to try to respond and hear Amy's comment, I recall a discussion last time, and Sean Gibson, maybe you can jump in and clarify. I recall that you and your staff had given some thought to the color tone on this wall, the texture of this wall, so that it was there was some thought given so to so that it would be somewhat pleasing to look at, even though they are right next door.
This is Sean. Yeah, thank you for for noting that. And yes, we we did design this within the constraints, the current constraints of the existing buildings, and part of that is a building that has balconies and windows on the lot line. So that's a challenge of a previous design. So we worked within that. We did design as much as possible to avoid direct window alignments and provide some setback for some of the windows and and, you know, and not not balcony to balcony alignments. So it was taken into account, but again, there are constraints with the existing buildings and and their configurations as well.
Thank you.
Sean, can you just remind us in the the rear, so I guess that would be the west side of the property? What is the the rear lot setback?
I don't have that off. I know that we went into that in detail on the last one. I think it was, you know, between fifteen and twenty-two at the top. That's on our end. In addition to, I think there's a fifteen-foot setback on the rear building. So it's a good, it's a good. Don't quote me on that. I should have that. I'm looking at the drawings right now. They're a little tiny on my screen. But if that's critical for a decision, I can.
Yeah, I for my, it was really just to remind myself, because I remember we had a lot of conversation around the zero side yard setback, but
That's along the side, yeah.
Yeah, more difference in the rear, as you're pointing out. And I was just trying to remember what what the rear was like, because if I recall, there's quite a lot of balconies against the property in the rear. And I believe you worked the design to accommodate that in the back as well.
Absolutely. Yes. And it is it is a challenge in the back, but we have significantly more of a of a setback in the rear.
I recall not only was there more space in the back, but we had a discussion about trees and the and the landscaping that was in the back was really nice because there was space for it.
Exactly. And and I think we have a sample palette for the landscaping, but that can also be informed by the neighbors as we proceed with that. And there's been differing requests by the rear neighbors on, you know, some people want thirty-foot tall landscaping, and some would prefer lower to allow more light in. So I think our plan now is is more in the ten to ten to fifteen range.
Staff has calculated the rear setback at fourteen feet, eleven and a half inches at the closer point. And then there's some articulation at the ground level where it does step back.
Thank you.
And Sean, this is this is Ellen again with one last question. You're still anticipating doing off-site construction, right? Which means less waste generated on site and maybe a little bit of a quicker schedule?
Exactly. So we've progressed our factory-built housing products and process. So the intention is to have much less disruption due to construction on site. It should go up faster. We bring the panels on, completed with utilities and windows, etc., typically installed and connect those panels rather than doing the bulk of the construction on site.
And I have a question for staff. So are we recently approved, I believe it's fully in effect, our time limit on construction projects before penalties kick in? And obviously, the neighbors to this project are sensitive to how much construction will take place. And there's been concern about this developer with regard to that Cherry Avenue or Cherry Street project. And I just want to ask, is this project certainly going to be covered by our new construction time limit ordinance?
That is correct. It will be. It was it's based on projects that are date of building permit issuance when the ordinance is effective. And Greg Rubens, I don't recall. I believe the ordinance is now effective.
It's not a right now. It's not effective due to the the COVID nineteen emergency. We were delayed in getting that to the city council. It's going to be the first reading is going to be considered next Monday night at the city council. The under the emergency order, there are some temporary time restrictions on construction in in town because of the stay-at-home orders in order to mitigate the impact on residents who are forced under the orders to stay home. But we're proceeding with the with the proposed ordinance. The first reading will be on the twenty-seventh of April, and second reading would probably be two weeks later. So it'll be effective by the by June thirtieth or sometime in the in the middle of June, it'll be effective. And the the timeline, it it has an element of retroactivity. So even a project that was approved before its effective date will still be governed by the timeline, but it will run from, as Lisa said, from the date of the building permit issue.
Okay, I think the neighbors will will be glad to hear that. And I'll just comment in general. You know, in our last meeting, I think, you know, we certainly looked more at the design elements in the last meeting before we continued it to this meeting specifically to probe the bundled parking with regard to below make below market rate housing, which I think the applicant did a nice job addressing. So as a commission, as I recall, we did comment, this was a handsome design. You know, we we appreciated the work that had gone into the design. But I just do want to reflect, you know, this is a big project, and it's going to be the tallest building in town. So to the neighbors of this building, I will say that it's, you know, your concern has been heard and understood. In general, though, I will comment that this building between the state allowances and our current zoning downtown, you know, it does provide for a large building envelope, and this applicant took advantage of that envelope. And that is their right to do so. So if and and my general comment is simply, if this isn't the kind of development we want as a city, we will need to think through that because we have to strike a balance. On one hand, there is still a housing crisis going on in our area and a strong recognition that we need more housing projects like this. However, does that mean we need to be constructing the tallest buildings in the history of our city? That's a balance we will have to consider and strike over time. And I will just say that in my experience, our current zoning allows for a lot of large construction. And if that's something the city doesn't want, it is far more beneficial to consider that on a zoning planning level and get in front of that issue as opposed to wait for projects to to materialize because once projects are in front of us, basically, our job is review them by way of compliance with zoning as it exists, not how we might want it to exist. So to the folks who are concerned about this project in particular or projects like this in general, I would encourage you to actually look at our zoning. And if there's a consensus that a change would need to be made, that is a more productive avenue than having strong concerns once once a project is actually gone through the planning process. So I I just wanted to comment on that. Honestly, I'm fairly neutral on the subject. If anyone is interested in my personal opinion, because I do see the need for housing, but I also understand we want to maintain a balance as a city, and that is something we are going to struggle with as a city. We're going to struggle with that as a planning commission, as planning staff, as city council, we're all going to struggle with that balance. And the more the citizens want to be involved in helping us think through that, the better. So that's that's my commentary on this, which will be one of the largest and is the tallest building to ever be approved in San Carlos.
Can I just clarify? I'm sorry. It is the tallest residential building, but how about the medical foundation and the commercial building is our taller in the industrial area.
Okay, thank you for that, Lisa. I appreciate that clarification.
I wanted to make a comment. I was looking at the city's climate action goals and looking at the goals and comparing it to this project. And I see a number of alignments, but first I also wanted to agree with the chair that the design of this building is is really architecturally, really, it's a very good-looking building, in my opinion. But back to the climate action goals. Recall our discussion that this is an energy-efficient design. And I recall our discussion that there's no natural gas coming to this building. It's all electric, so that's low-carbon energy use. The applicant is offering alternatives to using the car. You can walk to the train station. You can get on a bicycle. You can walk. And lastly, as Sean just mentioned, they're going to do off-site construction, which which means less waste generated on site. So I think there's some real, it's a big project, but they're really stepping up, in my opinion, to try to acknowledge and in many cases meet the city's climate action goals.
I agree with both of the last speakers, Ellen, and I think it was John, our chair. It's a very handsome architectural building. It may be tall and it may have a blank wall here or there, but again, we we need to balance what the housing crisis and shortage in our community and and get some below-market rate housing. And to do it with such a outstanding design, I am very encouraged that it will be a real asset to the downtown and the city as a whole. This is Don, by the way. You can't see me, but I'm I'm here.
Terrific. Thank you for that, Don, and we're certainly glad you were able to join us this evening. Sarah, do we happen to have any other callers on this item?
No callers.
In that case, I will entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I move that we close public hearing on this item.
This is Commissioner Dugan. I will second that. And I would just say, by way of etiquette, while we're doing these teleconference meetings, let's just state our name, you know, Commissioner Dugan, I second this item, just so it's a little easier on staff keeping up with us. Motion and a second to approve all in favor of closing public hearing on this item.
Mr. Dugan, there was no there was no vote on the on the public hearing closure?
Oh, that's what I just asked for. All in favor of all in favor of approving closing public hearing, say aye. Any ayes?
Planning Commission grant approval for the design review, tentative map, below-market rate housing plan, use permit and a transportation development management plan to allow the construction of one new five-story building with thirty-five residential units and two commercial units at number six twenty-six Walnut Street, APN oh five oh, one three one, oh six oh, oh seven oh, and oh eight oh, for the actions, for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and with the conditions, all of the conditions in the code compliance certificate and tentative map certificate.
So we we have a motion to approve this agenda item. Commissioners, any final deliberation or or any other thoughts? We you, I would entertain those now.
I would like to echo my appreciation for the responsiveness of the applicant to come up a simple solution, sure that there is no premium on the parking spaces for the below-market units. That was that was a nice solution, and it looks like a great project.
Terrific. If there's no other deliberation or comment, I would entertain a second to this motion.
This is Commissioner David Roof, and I second the motion.
Very good. Lisa, could we have a roll call on this item, please?
Commissioner Ruth?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yakaponi?
Yes.
And Chair Dugan?
Yes. Very good. This this item's been approved. Thank you, Veeve, and good luck with this project and getting it built on time.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to Agenda Item six B. And members of the public who would like to participate, you may dial in at any time to participate and provide your comments on Agenda Item six B, which involves the design review of five-five-eight Winding Way, a new single-family housing residence. Staff, do you have a report for us, please?
We do. Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Andrea Martisich, principal planner. The next item before you is a request for design review for new residents at five fifty-eight Winding Way. There was the request also includes three waivers as well as a variance, which I will go through as we move through the presentation. This might look familiar. You've actually reviewed two houses at the site already, but I am going to briefly go over the background. The site itself is outlined in red on the screen and is bordered by open space towards the the bottom of the picture, as well as a single-family residential, both located in the city of San Carlos as well as the county. The site itself is is at a lower grade than those homes that you see on the aerial view. It is located downhill, as I just mentioned, from some RS3 and also some RS6, so some larger lots, as well as some of our standard-sized lots. The road is currently under construction. It is pretty much finished with the exception of some sidewalks and some other items, but it is underway. It's, of course, been stopped with the current order, but it is further along than the last time you saw it. Next slide, please. So just a brief reminder, this site is about three point four one acres, the overall site. It was annexed into the city in two thousand and nine. One of the conditions of approval tied to the annexation was to prepare and adopt a master development plan, which was adopted by the city council in September of two thousand and eighteen. This adopted plan presents four of the five parcels, which are designated as downhill. And those are the four that you see within the road that circles around them, as well as one uphill site. This particular proposal tonight is the last downhill site. You can see it indicated with the arrow. There's a creek at the rear of these properties, as well as a no-build area. So you can see the proposed footprint of the houses taken directly from the master development plan, and those are all located up near the road away from the creek area as well as the no-build area. And as I mentioned, there are five lots, five lots total. You have already approved two of the houses. This is the third. And two more will be coming forward shortly at another meeting. So just to highlight some of the the major conditions as part of the master development plan, there was a requirement that each lot be a minimum of there was a requirement that each lot be a minimum of twenty thousand square feet. The plan also required each house to provide two paved offsite guest parking spaces. So that is addition, in addition to the covered parking required for the house. The houses had to be built or approved to be built in the general location, as shown on the map on the previous slide. There's also the no-development area, which includes includes the city's twenty-five-foot creek setback. And then there were also several mitigation measures that are applied to the project just throughout the proposal. Next slide. So as I mentioned, this is, this is in an undeveloped downhill lot. The zoning is RS3, which is single-family zoning. It is also in the hillside overlay district, as well as the stream development and maintenance overlay district because of that creek at the rear. The general plan designation is single-family load density. And this slide outlines some of the requirements, not all for the house. Specifically, as I mentioned before, the lot size minimum is twenty thousand square feet. This one does meet that, it's over twenty-three thousand, there's no maximum house size, as this property is located within RS3, the maximum floor area that we've talked about over the last year and a half does not apply to this site. The lot coverage maximum is twenty-five percent, they are under that. And then in terms of setbacks, they do meet all setbacks with the exception of the front, so they are requesting a waiver for that. The stream development setback, they are about sixty feet away when they're required to be twenty-five. And then the last three items, the overall height and the downhill building face, they're asking for a waiver from the requirement. And the final item is the natural state requirement and are asking for a variance based on that item. And the difference between the waiver and variance, besides some of the findings, is really just the amount of of exception they're asking for, so the waivers allow up to a ten percent relief from the standard, excuse me, whereas the variance is greater than ten percent, so so it is a different entitlement for that one. And I will go through each of these items throughout the presentation. So first we'll talk about design review for the property. This is a view of the house from the corner, so it has a few different frontages, so you will see this is the front door and proposed garage, next slide, please. The applicant is requesting approval for a four thousand seven hundred sixty-seven square foot residence. As I mentioned, it will step down the hillside, so at the street will be the upper level of the home. And the house will step down the hillside towards the left side of the screen on what we're looking at now. That there are no protected trees proposed for removal, and the applicant will also be adding new trees. Next slide, please. So the upper level, which is again at the street level, shows the two-car garage located at the front. Because this is in the hillside area, garages can be located up to five feet from the front property line, as well as, excuse me, assuming it's approved by the commission. This garage has parking for two cars, as well as two motorcycles and several bikes, you can see that to the rear. At this level is also the entrance itself to the house, guest living room and bedroom, great room, dining room, as well as the main entryway, as I mentioned, next slide. So stepping down in the house, the lower level consists of two bedrooms and a laundry room, as well as a bonus room, and then off to the left is the master suite, which has the bedroom, bathroom and closet. On both levels of the residence, there is a large terrace that comes off of the back. This is the, pretty much the entire outdoor area for the home, due to the steepness of the slope, as well as you can see the gray dashed line to the left of the screen. That is the limit of any developed area, so they cannot construct past that. And that includes patios, decks, anything like that, so all of the outdoor space is really contained on those two terraces. Next slide, please. So again, this is the rendering before the the map up in the corner tries to demonstrate what angle we're looking at, because the house curves and is kind of a has different wings off of it, it's not a straight-on view like we like we normally see. So this area again is the upper level, and you can see the garage off to the right, as well as that extra parking area behind the garage. For the front elevation, the top, the top elevation is generally speaking, the view from the rendering that was just shown. And then the lower drawing shows a view of the house straight on. I included that yellow line to represent on the profile of the street. So you'll see that a lot of the house from this view anyways is stepped into the hillside. So the garage, for example, extends about six feet above the the street level at that point. Next slide, please. And this is the rear elevation, so you can see the two terraces coming off the back. And in just a moment, I will go over the height for that, but we can go to the next slide. So this is a rendering looking towards the side and back. So you can see again the house stepping down the hillside, as well as those two larger patios. And this is coming around the corner, going uphill towards the front of the house. So this is what we'll be seeing across the canyon. As well as, you know, on your left side is you're coming around the front. The main body of the residence is proposed to be stucco, and you can see a dark beige color. Dark cedar siding is proposed along the front and fascia. And I'm sorry, the fascia windows and guard rails will be black and the cedar siding is along the front. If you do want to look at the materials, they are on page two hundred and thirty-five of your packet, if you'd like to see the color and materials board. You could go to the side elevations, next slide. So these are the side elevations demonstrating the house stepping into the hillside. Because of the the configuration of the house and the fact that it does, you know, have that sort of U-shape, I tried to outline the portion that's closest to each side. So on the left side, you can see that portion outlined in yellow is what's closest to that side property line, and same on the right. I'm trying to outline what's closest to to that elevation. Next slide, please. So there are three waiver requests that the applicant is asking for. The first is for the front setback. The applicant is requesting an eighteen-foot-two-inch setback when twenty is required. The overall height, the applicant is requesting thirty-seven feet six inches, one thirty-five is required. And the downhill building face, the applicant is requesting twenty feet eleven inches, one twenty is required. If you could go to the next slide, please. So the first waiver request, the front setback, I wanted to demonstrate the portion of the proposal that would be increasing, approaching into the front setback. And on this screen, it is the area that is in red. A small portion of the front would be encroaching into that setback for slightly less than two feet. If you could go to the next slide, please. The overall height, the maximum allowed is thirty-five feet, and again, the applicant is proposing thirty-seven-six. This slide demonstrates the red line, which is is the thirty-five-foot height, and the blue line for what is proposed. So I chose this slide just because it shows the sort of the most dramatic height with all of the the levels shown. But in this case, the portion above the height limit would mostly be the roof parapet. And from the front of the the house, this would not be visible as as over thirty-five feet, it would be just single-story.
So Andrea, if I could just pause you there. So when I'm considering an exception to height, my question is always, who's going to have to look at this thing? So, you know, a lot less excited about an exception if this was prominent up on one of our taller hills, and the whole city's going to have to look at it regularly. So do we have any train overlook or some view, just to show me like, who's across the canyon from this thing, like who's going to be looking at this? Is this just a hillside that'll never be developed? Is this, I think we have a U-shaped draw, you know, road being put in here. So will the house on, it's the house on the other side that's going to have to look at this thing, like who's impacted by this?
So the most immediate neighbors are the ones that are part of this development, the five homes. This house is located, let me see if I can find the elevation, but I mean, very much below the existing homes. So let me see if I can pull up the slope. I want to say at least fifty feet below the homes above and probably more. So these homes that are built now on either side, that are not part of this development, are looking down on the tops of these homes, not at them, if that makes sense, because they're so high above them.
But is there, will that, but the new houses going in as part of this development, will they be on equal level looking across at this thing?
They will be close, so pretty much every house coming in these five will be asking for the exact same waivers and variances because of the steepness of slope. In this case, the slope is about fifty-five percent. And so, and the, and the, some of the homes we've seen have been actually even more than that. So all of these five homes in this development, which are the only homes at this height or at this level elevation, will be about the same height and about the same placement, and all kind of have the same the same exceptions if you approve them.
Well, I mean, I I guess I sort of understand that, but like, as I'm looking at this building, what what actually makes it have to be two and a half feet higher? Like, what would the impact be if we said no to this?
That's something I'd like to actually defer to the applicant, if 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 that's okay.
That's fine.
My my first thought is the plate heights, I know that that's that's an important consideration for them. But I'd like to let them answer if that's
Sure, yeah, we can table that that concern, okay.
Okay, so next slide, the downhill building face, please. So as you recall, houses within the hillside overlay have a maximum downhill building face of twenty feet. So in this case, they're asking for a waiver to allow twenty feet eleven inches. And what this this diagram shows, because the grade is not level across, the line of the twenty-foot maximum is a little jagged. So I tried to show on the red line kind of where that is generally. But the area that's in blue is the portion that would exceed the twenty-foot height. So the whole rear of the house is not exceeded, it is those portions highlighted there in blue. The the slope of the property has the, has a direct impact on the residence. So their maximum natural state, which I'll I'll talk about in a minute, I'm sorry, their minimum natural state that they have to provide is eighty percent of the lot. And I will go over in a minute that most of their development of the site for stormwater, for paving, for retaining walls, takes up that that number that they're allowed. So in order to build a house that's two-story and also not go into the non-developed area, they are asking for these these waivers and the variance. And again, I'll let the applicant speak to the height and why that couldn't be at twenty feet, for example. Next slide. The applicant is requesting a variance for the natural state requirement. So as I mentioned, the natural state requirement, the minimum required is eighty percent of the lot. So that's about eighteen thousand eight hundred square feet has to remain untouched. So in order to conform with this number, the applicants would have to keep their footprint, and this isn't just the footprint of their house, it is utilities, it's stormwater, paving, retaining walls, that will all count towards natural state, and they would have to keep that under percent or under twenty percent.
And Andrea, where where does that requirement come from? Is that just because this is completely undeveloped? I mean, it seems like eighty percent seems like a high number. Is it because it's close to a creek or something like that? I guess I just don't understand that requirement.
Sure, so it applies to any hillside lot, so it would actually apply to developed lots as well. What's what's unique about this lot is the the slope of the lot is so drastic. A lot of times, we will see like maybe a twenty percent slope. The code requires that you take the slope of the lot and add twenty-five percent to it, and that resulting number is your minimum natural state.
So this is a requirement of our hillside overlay?
Correct.
Okay.
And the steeper the slope, the more you have to keep a natural state.
I see, okay, so it's a sliding scale, and this is bitterly steep, and that's what drove the eighty percent?
Right, exactly.
Got it.
So this particular map shows what their footprint would look like if they were to comply with the natural state, without asking for a variance, just meeting the straight numbers. And without including the house itself, just including utilities, grading, stormwater, and paving at the front, they would already exceed their minimum. Without even building the house, really just building that garage area. So they wanted to demonstrate that even if they were to comply, they wouldn't really have too much buildable area left. If you could go to the next slide. So what they're proposing and requesting is to have a minimum natural state of sixty-seven point six percent instead of the eighty percent. And this slide shows
I don't know. It shows that it's still going.
Yeah, the mic is on.
Yeah, the mic is on.
There should be the.
I'm not seeing this. I'm seeing another computer screen. I'm not seeing that screen. I'm seeing a different one. I'm seeing a Windows screen.
You're not seeing this?
No.
This supposed to be broadcast.
No, it's still a Windows screen.
What's weird is it literally just cut out. Only the commissioners. It was going, it would have just cut out. I think it might have timed out, but it was on. That's why.
We'll wait just a minute and we'll see how that works out.
Okay. Could you go back to sharing your screen?
Yes. I don't know if we ended.
I don't know.
This is Andrea.
Yes.
I'll do it just later while we figure out if this is actually the power.
I think we were on questions. And actually, I have an answer for Chair DeGinn once we're back up to one of his earlier questions as well. So if it's okay with him, just start here.
Here. Sure, yeah, welcome back. It looks like we're streaming. Is our audio streaming as well?
Yes.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. We took a pause there on our planning commission meeting in order to solve a technical issue. Thank you for joining us again. We are picking back up. We're in public hearing on Agenda Item 6B, which is a consideration of a single-family resident design review at 558 Windy Way. And we were in the middle of the staff presentation on the issue. And staff had pulled the applicant in in order to discuss, I believe, the height and building face of variants being requested. Andrea, could you please prompt us back to where we were and key the question back up for the applicant, please?
Of course. And through the chair, if I could answer one question you asked earlier about height, I took the time to get the answer. You had asked about the neighboring residential homes and how far up they were on the hill, meaning like what would they see, you know, in relation to these homes? And they are over, they're at an elevation point over 200 feet higher than than these homes, significantly higher. And then we were going to the applicant to ask them to explain the plate height and the reasoning, if there was any way they could lower either the overall height or the downhill building face height to comply with the code rather than requesting the waivers and or variances. We have Greg, who is the project architect via video, and we have Ron Grove, who is the owner and applicant via telephone. Thank you.
I think this is Ron Grove. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Ron. Thank you.
Yeah. As you guys know, these are very difficult sites and over 55% average slope on these lots. You previously approved two houses on this site. And this is the third one that's come across. We've done nothing different here. Due to the hillside requirements, we can't, the height, we have to step down the hill and it's going down so steep that to follow the hillside requirements is what triggers the height, the height issues. Same with the natural states. I mean, if you look at these houses, this house right here only sits 13 feet above the street. And the reason, the reason we're over the height is because of that hillside requirement. If we were to, if, we're trying to keep these houses up enough so they actually have a street presence versus looking at the rooftop as you drive up the road. And that's, that's the whole issue on the, on the height of these things. It's because of the steepness of the lot.
Yeah, understood. Andrea, just to make sure I understand your, your feedback, and I appreciate you looking it up. So, you know, we're on a downward sloping lot, so it's down from the street, but then it's going towards like a creek bed. And then nothing else is going to be built between that, the applicant's house, or you know, the house we're considering tonight, and Wingate Avenue. So, and you're saying Wingate Avenue is then a steep uphill 200 feet until we get to those homes?
So let me, Lisa, if you could, excuse me, go back to, I believe it's the second slide with the aerial view?
Yeah.
Okay, so the project site within that red area where the houses are proposed are in the lowest part. So they are about 200 feet, more than 200 feet, but at least 200 feet below King's Court. And I believe a little bit less from Wingate. I can get that number for you as well, but definitely over 200 feet. So it basically dips down from both Wingate and Kings to form this valley at the bottom. And so the house itself, the roof of the house will be at least 200 feet below the ground level elevation of the houses on either side.
Okay, I get that. But so this particular lot is on the right-hand side, kind of like, you know, it's exactly where that project site arrow is.
Exactly.
And, but somehow, so, but it's sloping. Okay, I see. So the slope is, is still going that way. Okay, sorry, I'm just getting a lot. I'm having a hard time visualizing this. And I'll just say, you know, in general, when we're reviewing height limit variances in particular, you know, if we could just get some kind of view that helps us understand who will be looking at this thing. You know, I can see here, I don't think the people up at King's Court will be too bothered by two and a half extra feet, you know, 200 feet beneath them as I'm looking at this. But no one else is going to be built like a cross from them. Like, so this, this, basically, this site is the bottom of the horseshoe of the road and there's nothing is going to be proposed like a cross from it as part of this development? Is that correct? And that's probably a question best for the applicant?
Well, and I can, I can start the answer. There will be one home built across the street. So four of them will be located within that green area in the middle of the red outline. One will be located in that little part that you can see kind of juts out to the left.
I see.
So that'll be one house across. Everything else by that, that house across the street is all open space.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so if you look at that, that, you know, to the, assuming north is up, looking at the southwest, that thing sticking out, if there's a house in there, is that purely downsloped then from this house?
That house is actually upsloped.
So that's upslope. So the road is kind of the bottom of the valley?
Right.
Okay. And then, okay.
And through the chair, we'll make sure for the next two that come in that we provide clearer graphics demonstrating the height between that whole area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Andrea, again, I'd like, I'd like to point out one more thing. The height of that, the garage, as you look at that house, we had to raise the garage up a couple feet because as we had it designed before, it actually sat five feet off the ground at the front of the house. And we were concerned that deer and any, everything else would jump on that roof. So we've actually got it at that corner, I think it's seven or eight feet now, but the darn thing was buried in the dirt almost. You could walk under the roof off the, off the road at that right rear corner. I see.
Andrea, Jim Yacopone here. Could you please go to the, the elevation that you were sharing that shows the difference between the standard and where the roof line, the parapet actually is?
And one thing to point out while we're getting to that, in hillside districts, we measure the height a little bit differently than we do for flat lots. We measure from the lowest point of the house to the highest. So for example, on this slide, you can see the bottom of the house, which touches grade where it says stucco siding, and there's a few measurements like 58, I think it says. So we're measuring from that lowest point to the highest point from the street. So even though no portion of the house might be over, you know, 28, 30 feet, because we're taking the most conservative measurement, that also adds to it. And that's something that we do only in the hillside overlay district. And that might be actually a little bit easier to see on the side, the right and left views. But basically, let's see if that shows. That one, I think. I had one, I believe. There. So basically, we're taking the very lowest point. On the left side, you can see there's an arrow. It's a little hard to read, lowest elevation of structure. And we're measuring all the way up to the garage level. So that does, or I'm sorry, to the parapet on the right. So that does necessarily, you know, add some height because of the, you know, the lowest point where the, the structure touches. That would include, if they had a deck that came out, we would count that. So it really is a much more conservative measurement than just measuring straight up on grade at each point, like we normally do for, for flat lots.
Thank you. That was very helpful. So, you know, maybe just to, to help them with the visualization, if, for example, there were soil that were three foot higher in this very lowest point, then this would not even be a question?
Right.
Correct.
That, that's helpful visual.
Yes, yeah, so that is correct. The, the thing that's interesting about hillside lots is you pull on one thing and it kind of affects something else, right? So if they were to do that, they might be grading more than, you know, they were supposed to under the natural state, so that might trigger more natural state variance. So, so they could do that for sure, but they would definitely need to make sure they're still, you know, meeting the natural state requirements as well.
Good. No other question on this point. Thank you.
Okay. Andrea, are you, you have staff presentation yet to do on this one? Is that correct?
I do not. I've completed that unless you have more questions. I believe the applicant, an architect, can answer your questions about the plate height and lowering the overall height as well.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any further question of staff before we hear from the applicant?
Andrea, this is Ellen Garvey. I have one question. I note that the, that the size of the house is 4,695 feet. Can you refresh my memory? I believe that this size, even though it's large, is compatible with the sizes of the previous two houses that the commission already approved.
Yes, they're all around the same size, within, I would say, you know, between four and 4,800. Yeah. And, and again, we're counting within that, the garage area as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
David Roof here. I would like to know what the surface of the roof is composed of because that will be visually one of the more prominent features, given the geography here.
If I could, for, to Greg or Ron?
Or Greg, you can go ahead.
Sure. The surface of the roofs is going to be, it's obviously a flat roof and we're proposing to do a decorative colored gravel on the top since it will be still visible. I think with the color board, I believe something was, a photograph of sorts was proposed with that. And that was the same concept with the two previous houses. It was just a mix of colored gravel, slightly different hues. One of them had been grayish, one had been, might have been brownish in color to give it some variety.
I, I understand. If I recall from the previous houses, the desire to make that roof look attractive with the, with the gravel and the construction required to do that was part of the reason the roof had to be a little bit higher. Is that right?
That is correct. There's a little parapet around the, the whole perimeter of the roof and that was for a cosmetic part of that. So it just, you didn't see the rock at the edge.
Yes, there's a little bit of a trade-off between the height and the, and making the top of the roof look attractive. That's all for my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Andrea, if you could just go back to maybe that, the general project information slide, I think that's packet age, or presentation 29.
And this is a question for the applicant. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, you're asking for variance of, of height. And I know it's a challenging lot. I do get that. But I'm, you know, cognizant that in the hillside overlay, we did not put new restrictions on floor area ratio and et cetera. The whole hillside area was exempted from that. And a lot of reasons for that. But what, what that leaves us with is, you know, what does constrain the size of a house in a hillside area? And I understand it's a challenging lot, but somehow you've managed to fit a 4,700 square foot house into it. So I, you know, I'm not particularly, you know, I think the height requirement and, and the building face requirement, that is in fact how we try to determine the size of the building envelope that's allowed on these lots. And there is nowhere else in San Carlos that you can place a 4,700 square foot house now. And I'm just not certain that an exemption is clearly warranted here, given, you know, you've, you've clearly found a way to fit an awful lot of house on this lot. So can you please explain exactly why you need two and a half more feet of height?
Yeah, part of it's that parapet that's there is sitting up for the cosmetic part in the front. And part of it was that, that section over there where I said the deer can get on the roof. The other, the other thing to note is that the garage is about 700 feet on that thing, too. So it's about 4,000 feet a house instead of 4,700. And in our last meeting, I forget which commissioner asked me to, to add an ADU house, but, but you can't get ADUs on there. But in this particular house, we did put an ADU as part of the house. This is actually, I'm going to keep this house, and it's also got an in-law unit built into it for, for family members as well. So if you take a look at the plan, the floor plan itself, you'll note that there is about 600 feet of, of extra ADU space in that house, which I want the commissioners out for when we were there last time. And I told them we were only putting it in one house, and it was the one I was keeping. And, and there it is.
And through the chair, looking at the plans, we did not classify it as an ADU because there's no cooking facilities. Otherwise, it could be considered an ADU. So just in order to have that be, you know, counted as an ADU, it would need some sort of, of cooking facilities. But it does have the refrigerator, dishwasher, you know, washer dryer, all of that.
I'd like to add a couple things. In terms of the square footage of the house, one of the things that sizes, that square footage of the house contributes to is the lot coverage. That's, has a direct correlation. The lot coverage maximum, all over the hillside lots are 25%. And we're just a hair under 18%. We're not anywhere close near the maximum in terms of the lot coverage. We're getting a lot of square footage in there just by burying the house into the hillside. We've got some very tall retaining walls on the uphill side that obviously you can't see in any elevations. I think, Ron, we've got some 12 to 13 foot retain, internal retaining wall heights on this project.
Yeah, we're hiding them with the house.
Yeah. Another thing with these hillside lots, of all the houses we've proposed so far, this is the only house that you can actually see the front door from the street driving by. The two previously approved houses, the front door was anywhere between, I believe, nine to 11 feet below the street level. And the only thing you could see was the garage, the garage door, basically. So with this house, this is the nicest looking house so far. And, you know, trying to balance all these things with these steep hillsides, we kind of, we're kind of, you know, that contributes to the height as well, because we're getting a lot more benefit in terms of the street appeal and attractiveness of the, of the house from the street that you drive up. Thank you.
Well, let me just follow up. So if we said, nope, you got to be under 35 feet, like, what would that do to your design?
Well, to give you a little background on this, this has been through, through planning and Andrea, at least three or four times with designs and changes, we had it lower, then we, we raised it up because of the parapits and the look of the house. And we've gone through at least four elevation changes on this thing to get it just the way planning liked it. And, and, and for the best. I mean, they had great ideas and we went with it. And I think that, I think the house is attractive now. Prior, we had it a little lower, and it, it didn't look as good, and we didn't have the parapits out there, and the roof looked flat and kind of just, kind of like a commercial building. The way it's set up now, I, I think it's very attractive, and it's going to fit that, that site nice. I mean, there's only five houses on that site. It's four acres. Nobody will use that, nobody will use that road but the five people on the road because it's a dead end road. So the people that are going to look at the house are going to be the people that walk up and down the road, or other people that buy on that street. So they're going to probably want to think it's attractive, too, before they purchase on that road. Yeah. So with that said, I mean, I, I think, think planning did a great job on steering us in the direction they did. And like I said, it took four to five months to get it to where it is on extensive, extensive plan checks. I mean, extensive. I can't even tell you how many times have things been through this.
Okay. No, I appreciate that comment. Andrea, is that a fair characterization that they initially presented a lower design, and we helped coach them into, you know, breaking up the roof line, et cetera? And that, that is partially why it's presented as a, as a waiver now?
Yeah. And the, one thing that staff really had an issue with in the beginning was the garage area, which is so visible from the street, that rear portion where the motorcycles are. The original design, staff felt was very massive and bulky and not appropriate for, you know, the area or even the design of the house. So that's been significantly reduced and blended in better. So that, I would say that was probably, you know, one of the main comments driving design that staff had. And that, that is something we feel that they, they addressed.
Okay. Thank you for that. And I'll just pause for a second, remind the public, we're about to open this up to public comment. If you'd like to dial in with public comment, please dial 669-900-9128. That's 669-900-9128. And meeting ID 3, I'm sorry, meeting ID 238-262027. That's 238-262027. Commissioners, any further questions of either staff or the applicant?
I have a comment for the architect. When I looked at this, I know I was standing in the, the slope, the lot, but I didn't like the way the driveway came out on that curve. It would be a blind intersection. But considering that there'll probably only be about A on there, and they'll be coming to that house, it doesn't bother me at all.
All right. That's a good thought, Donna. Anything else, anyone?
Yeah. Hi, Jim Yocapone again. I, I appreciate hearing what other considerations the development team had with regard to the natural state. It seems to me, you know, that would appear to be the larger percentage impact. And what, what options did, have you talked through with regard to preserving or in a natural state?
I'm going to let, this is Ron, I'm going to let Greg tell you about that. But I know firsthand that with the, the extra off-street parking and the extra two-car off-street parking almost triggered putting us over the natural state. But I'll let Greg break it all down for you.
Yeah. So the, the natural state, on this property, more so than the other two, it is the most constrained based on the setbacks, what's called the rung line, creek setbacks, or apparent corridors and all those items. So we're kind of limited. It's kind of tight to fit everything as it is. So he gave us the least amount of options of how to configure it out, to try and get more efficiency with remaining natural state than some of the other lots. I would also say that, I think this was mentioned in the previous commissioner hearing, is that in the city's development code, there's actually no defined, actual defined criteria of what natural state is. And right now, with the way it's being implemented consistently by staff, is that it also includes anything that's disturbed for stormwater treatment and landscaping. So I'd say if, let's see. Let's see. So in terms of, excuse me, sheet A2 of the supplemental, I don't know what sheet that is of the, of the agenda, that shows what actually is considered the natural state for this application. So in there, you know, when it comes down to it, we're kind of, our hands are kind of tied in that when the stormwater treatment drainage facilities get designed by the civil engineer to meet the city's engineer requirements, that really enlarges or decreases, actually decreases, amount of remaining, remaining natural state, more so than just the house itself.
And through the chair, if I could add one thing in response to that, which also actually, I believe, addresses Commissioner Bradley's concern. Previously, they had proposed to have guest parking, one of their guest parking spots, at the end of the driveway in a hammerhead spot. And this is on, on the site plan. And because of the concern about that driveway being so close to the corner, the city required them to actually move that parking out of there, so that they could use that hammerhead as a turnaround and exit face forward. But in doing that, that required the applicant to disturb more natural state in order to accommodate the two off, off-street parking sites. So that was actually another requirement we had that did, did contribute to reducing their natural state.
Understood.
So, so Andrea, could you show us maybe the, the floor plan or the, the, the plan view that allows us to see where this off-street parking is?
Sure.
And just get a sense as to how it might have, what the result was in terms of reducing this ratio?
Sure. So originally, and Lisa, if you could try, try to show her I'm talking, the two parking areas that are uncovered, one was originally included within that hammerhead driveway area. And the original, so one parking space would be there, and another would be a parallel parking space along winding way. As a result of concern that these cars are going to be backing out onto winding way at a corner, we asked the applicant to redesign it to keep the hammerhead as is, so keep that paving, so a car could back into it and then exit face forward, which required them to move their off-street parking that was required somewhere else that was previously going to be landscaped. So that was something else that ate into their natural state requirement as well. And that was a requirement that, that engineering asked for, for safety purposes.
And, you know, maybe by simple math, then, is the, does the square footage of this off-site parking relocation that, that they've worked with the city on, if that were included back in, does that get us out of a variance condition and back into just a waiver?
No, I don't think so, because the, the house itself, just the footprint of the house, extends, you know, significantly past that allowable disturbed area. I'm trying to, and Greg, maybe you could answer this, if the house were to end at the, at the compliant natural state diagram, how deep that would be, how deep the house would be?
Um, let's see.
I'm looking as well.
So on sheet A3 of the design review supplemental, there's a table in the lower right-hand corner. And the bottom paragraph says, note, with the basic parking stormwater features, the minimum natural state remaining for living space is 169 square feet. So of the, of the two drawings that you have up right now, Andrea, the one on the left-hand side is compliant natural state. So with that area as disturbed, that's shown there on the left-hand side, that only leaves 169 square feet allocation for living space for a house.
And is that on top of the disturbed area or in addition to?
Um.
If that makes sense. Because you could, you know, theoretically build on some of the, that area disturbed for stormwater, for example.
Well, they can't put any stormwater treatment under a house features. You know, all those lines have to be outside the footprint of the house.
Okay.
So what's shown on the left-hand side is that whole area there has allocation for stormwater treatment, drainage, and grading of that sorts of, of those features. So that area there is 169 square feet below the, what would, you know, of compliance for remaining natural state. Did I say that right?
I think what you're saying is if we, if we put the parking in and we put the drainage system in, you could have a house that's 167 square feet.
That's correct. That's a good way of saying it.
It could be, and that would equal the natural state. We wouldn't exceed it.
That would be, yeah, what would be allowed without a waiver and without a variance.
So what I'm asking for clarification on, on the compliant natural state, the area that's hatched to the rear of the garage or to the left of the garage, that's just grading, then?
Grading, right. All the underground piping for the stormwater and also.
Okay. So it is stormwater. But you can't put house theoretically on top of that, right, within that area?
You cannot put house over stormwater treatment features.
So then are they redesigned under the proposed one?
Under the proposed one, the stormwater treatment feature, you know how the shape, the shape of the house is kind of U-shaped in a sense? So that metal portion there that's hatched, that's where the stormwater treatment feature is.
Under the current hillside regulations?
Yes, right there, Andrea, where you're melsing.
So what I'm trying to clarify then, on the compliant natural state, the, the area that is on a grid, right, you're saying is stormwater, but that's not where the stormwater would be if a house was actually there?
Correct. Correct. Because it has to be moved downhill outside the footprint of the house.
Okay. So following that, if that were your stormwater, your house would be up at the grade level with the garage, basically. But then it wouldn't need setbacks?
Correct. And it'll only be 159 square feet.
Right.
You couldn't even have a, you know, all the basic one bathroom, hookups for washer and dryer, food cooking facilities, those basic requirements required by a code for a living unit.
No, no further question on this point for the applicant, for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Commissioners, anything else for staff or applicant?
Nothing from me.
No.
I've been informed there are no collars. Is that still the case?
That is correct.
Okay. If that's the case, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing on this matter?
It's almost Bradley.
I'll second that, Garvey.
All in favor of closing public hearing, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Public hearing is closed. We can now deliberate. Commissioners?
David Roof here. I can, I can start off by saying that the waiver and variances, to me, seem pretty reasonable, given the, the topography of the, of the site. If you're going to build any house there that's a If you're going to build any house there, that's reasonable, this sort of, of variance or waiver in the case of height would be, would be necessary. And looking at the totality of the impact of the house, this, this seems to be in line with the character of the area. It looks pretty nice. It's not going to impact the, the neighbors' views much. Most of what we're talking about is kind of down, down and out of sight. So, so I'm fairly comfortable that the, their requests for the waivers and the variance are, are necessitated by the particular upper feet.
This is Ellen Garvey. I'll, I have a few comments. I really, I appreciate the natural state discussion, and I appreciate that the applicant is not going to remove any protected trees with this project. I like that a lot. The house is large, but it is compatible in size with the neighboring houses that are to be built or are currently being built, so I, I don't see an incompatibility there. And at the end of the day, it does increase the housing stock supply in San Carlos, which I also like.
I think the, the setback and the height waivers all make complete sense to me, and I, you know, applaud, applaud the applicant team for a nice job of working all of that in. And I, I guess I would say I didn't know tonight about how the 80% comes about, and I do appreciate, for example, that if it were, you know, a 60% slope on average, we'd be at 85, and again, we'd have even less square footage to build. And, you know, maybe this would just be a last question, back to Andrea, you know, was there a conversation about reducing the square footage of the house? You know, for example, do you really need garage space for motorcycles, or what if there weren't a fourth bedroom in a particular, since it's not an ADU? Would that have gotten us any closer to 80% or 80% minus 10%, so 72?
Sure, I can answer that. We definitely did talk about, like you mentioned, reducing the size of the garage, and that was something we went back and forth on. And ultimately, when it was going to be dedicated to parking for the motorcycles, we said, okay, we could, you know, see how that might work, but again, you need to reduce it, you need to make it less conspicuous. With this one, we did talk about size generally, but I would say not as much as we would for an RS6 lot, because RS6 lots, as we know, are generally, you know, 5,000 to maybe 75 up to 10,000 square feet, and neighbors, you know, very close. This lot, because it's so large, because it is downhill, and because all of the immediate neighbors are all part of the same development, we didn't focus on size as much as design and getting the footprint itself as small as possible. And again, it's, it's kind of a traditional back and forth where, you know, the developer, and in this case, the owner too, is trying to, you know, build the house that they can for their, their budget and what they're trying to sell for. So on this one also, we talked about it a little bit, but not to the degree of if it were on a smaller lot. It's, it's meeting the lot coverage as well as the size in terms of if we were to consider, you know, a maximum floor area, which is not required, and it would be significantly under that. But I would say the, the focus would definitely be on design on this lot versus the size.
Okay. Thank you, and no further comment.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'll just say, you know, in general, it's a big house. I think it's attractively designed, certainly maximizing the available envelope there and requesting variances. That said, I'm of the mind that with property, it, it can be developed to its highest use as long as it's not impacting others, and, and I do agree that there are not great impacts from this house, given its existing neighbors are all, I think, roughly 200 feet above this house, so they're not going to be bothered by it. I think the only potential house that will be bothered by the height and mass of this thing will be the new neighbor that will be constructed to the, I guess, southwest of that property. And they will certainly be aware of the existence of the other house when they go to buy theirs, so it'll be understood. And I guess one bonus they have is the developer will be living right across the street, so if they have any problem with their house, they won't have far to go. So I guess I'm generally supportive of, of this house with variances. I did want to probe the natural state exemption a little bit. I'm not, do we, Andrea, can you speak to, like, what is our policy thought around natural state? So we just think hillside lots in general warrant less disturbance than other lots, and, you know, the steeper it is, the less we should disturb it? I mean, is that, is that basically what, what the natural state policy is all about?
It is, that's exactly correct. The steeper the slope, the less grading and disturbance we want for the site. As the applicant mentioned, one of the challenges we face is there's no definition of natural state within our code. So we have consistently interpreted that to mean any disturbance. So not only the footprint of a house, but it could be retaining walls or even just, you know, grading of the site, like for the stormwater measures. But the idea is that if you have a new lot, the, the steeper it is, the more unstable it could be, the more impacts there could be, so the smaller the footprint of development there should be as part of that. And we really see it, we don't see it too often because there aren't that many vacant sites in the city that are, are steep like this. So we usually see it more on developed, on developed lots where they've already been graded, and someone's, you know, not making it more disturbed than what it is currently. In this case, we're starting from scratch, and I think it's, you know, these homes are one of the first few times we've seen something like this, and where we're actually counting every, you know, little disturbance, because it hasn't been touched at all.
I see. Thank you for that. And, you know, I know there's a lot of big, meaty issues we're intending to grapple, you know, in the coming years, so I don't know where this would weigh, probably low on that priority list, actually. But I just wonder if we would want to revisit natural state. I'm of a mind that I would, in general, want to grant large exemptions to that, but that's an uneducated view, but it's, and that I would like to be more informed on. The reason for that is these steep ravines are our biggest fire hazard as a city. In fact, if you lived above one of these ravines, you should be quite thankful if someone wants to come in and disturb a lot of that natural state and put a big fire block in for you. So not that I want to see our hillside paved over, but I also am not sure I want to see, you know, only 20% of the natural state disturbed if someone is in fact going in and developing in a handsome way that in fact will make it a lot less likely that a fire will rip through that valley some year. So I'm just not sure our current natural state ordinance is really in line with the best thinking on fire safety, given recent events. So I just throw that out there as a general comment. Beyond that, I'm generally supportive of this project, and in particular, I support the exemption of natural state.
Through the chair, this is Lisa Porras. I just wanted to add a little bit to the conversation for the, for the benefit of the commission, so that you have as much information as you can in order to make, you know, decisions here for projects. And one of the things that Andrea mentioned was that we didn't have a definition for natural state, and that is true within the zoning ordinance. However, there are other sections of the municipal code, specifically in the areas that talk about grading and leaving things at their natural grade, so we can draw from other sections of the municipal code, which basically allows staff to make the interpretation for natural state and what that means. But I do agree that it would be beneficial to have some point two within the zoning ordinance itself. But luckily, we have general plan policies that we defer to and other sections of the municipal code with respect to grade. And then the second thing that I wanted to mention, and this project is, is within the city's, I think it's called the Wildlands Urban Interface. We often refer to that as the WUI. And within that, there are certain requirements for having vegetation, you know, how the landscape plan is arranged, and what they can do to maintain fire safety with, on their property. So the site is subject to that, and that's something that is looked at. But I, I just wanted to provide that information to the commission. That's it. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Lisa. Any other comments on this project? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve this agenda item.
David Ruff here, and I move that the planning commission approve the code compliance certificate for a new residence, approve the waiver for the overall height of the residence, downhill building face and front setback, and the variance to exceed the natural state requirement as outlined in the code compliance certificate at 558 Winding Way, APN 049141690, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and as conditioned in the waiver variance in code compliance certificate.
Bradley will second the motion.
Terrific. We have a motion and second. Lisa, can we get a commissioner roll call, please?
Commissioner Ruff?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yakaponey?
Yes.
Chair Dukin?
Yes. So this matter is approved. Good luck with the development, and appreciate you developing on such a challenging lot.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll be seeing you again, I guess, for two more.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Thanks.
Terrific. That moves us to Agenda Item 6C. This is a request for a creek exception at 1937 Eaton Avenue, and this item has been continued to a date uncertain. So we now move to Agenda Item 7, Reports, Correspondence and General Information. Lisa, do you have a report for us on recent city council action?
I believe Alceve is still with us, and if he is, I would defer to him.
I am. Good evening, Chair and members of the planning commission. Just a couple of quick updates from the city council's Monday night meeting of last Monday. The city council was interested in responding to the pandemic and support of local small business and also tenants and tenant assistance. A couple of different ways to go about that, but we were looking for a partnership to administrate funds from the city to assist those groups of people in San Carlos. So the city council took action to provide some funding to the Samaritan House, and the Samaritan House is a group that the city counts, the city has provided funding to in the past for tenant assistance. And in this case, the city council moved to dedicate $112,000 and appropriate that money for local tenants in the city of San Carlos, $5,000 per household, and for residents of a income of 120% or below the median income for, median income for San Mateo County. They also took action to dedicate $112,000 to the San Mateo County Strong Fund, which is a newly created fund to assist and again respond to the pandemic, particularly within San Mateo County. And in this case, we will be working with the San Mateo County Strong Fund and also SAMCIDA, which is a local economic development group, to provide this grant funding to local small businesses. And that concludes some of the actions that the city council took at their last meeting.
Terrific. Appreciate that, Al. Thank you. Commissioners, any comments or reports? Hearing none. Lisa, do you have any correspondence for you?
Yes, there was an email received this evening, and I believe it was from the same speaker that spoke on the 626 Walnut item that we received. And so that email was actually sent to the city clerk's office, and it was forwarded to staff during the course of the meeting. So that speaker was able to call in, and so you did hear from that speaker, but we will make sure to take the email that was received and add it to the record, and we can certainly pass it on to the commission as well.
Okay. Terrific. All right. Then our final item, any staff comments or reports for us this evening?
Well, other than it's great to see all of your faces, unfortunately, not in person, but it's great to be able to be back in business, so to speak. So really lovely to see you all, and thank you for being able to participate, and I think we did actually a good job tonight, minus the one little glitch. I think everything else went really smoothly, so that's encouraging. On to our regular matters. The next scheduled meeting for the planning commission is scheduled for May 4th. However, we don't have any items that are ready to be presented, though it looks like we will be back meeting with you via Zoom on May 18th. And we will be sure to communicate regularly with you. I know that these are, you know, rather rapidly changing times, and, but we want to remind you to continue to check your city emails for updates and reminders from staff, as that is our main communication avenue that we will use to keep you as updated as possible as things unfold. But for the foreseeable future, we will be using Zoom again until further notice. And I believe that is all I have. I will ask Andrea Mardisich if she has anything to add.
Good show, ma'am. Boy, it's new. You could put it all, I'm expecting two to three projects on May 18th, one of which is the creek item that was continued from this evening. That's it. Thank you.
Yep.
Well, terrific. Thank you, everyone, and staff in particular, appreciate you continuing your important work in this very challenging time, and as we continue to turn the crank on progress and development in San Carlos, certainly appreciate your efforts and hope everyone is staying safe as they're doing that. So thank you very much. And in particular, I think tonight did go just fine. You know, a couple glitches are to be expected, first time we do this, but now we know what we're doing, so no excuses on May 18th. And thank you, everyone. Have a good night. We're on our turn.
Bye.
Thank you.
Take care, everyone.